Board of Directors and over to you Director Harrington.
We are here at the Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting. Clerk Moss, could you do us the honors, please?
Certainly. Director Harrington, the Housing Authority Board of Directors is meeting this regular session, August 5th, 2025. Director Roper? We see you there.
Online.
Director Willie?
Here.
Director Snyder?
Here.
Director Phi?
I am present.
Director Treese?
Here.
Director Harrington?
Here.
And I'll announce Director Svaras' excuse from today.
All right. The next item on our Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting is public comment. This is an opportunity for members of our community to come and address the Housing Authority Board of Directors on any topic related to our work. Clerk Moss, is there anyone who wishes to do so?
Thank you, Director Harrington. I did not see anyone sign up in advance for the Housing Authority. Would any member, Mr. Feek?
Chair Harrington and Commissioners, I'm Dale Feek, resident Forest Grove since 1966. I don't think there's an actionable item in which there's going to be hearing today. So I think I'm correct on that. So I just want to make sure you know how much I appreciate the Housing Authority and what they've been doing for the people in Washington County. They work hard. They use all their minutes to do the best they can to provide housing and services to county residents. So they have my full support, and I know you support them also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feek.
Thank you. Was there anyone else in the auditorium that wish to provide comment? Not seen one raise their hand or come forward. Is there any member online via Zoom that we should provide public comment to the Housing Authority for up to two minutes? Give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seen any hands. Director Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Next, we'll move on to today's consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of our June 17th, 2025 meeting. What are the wishes of the board on today's consent agenda?
Move for approval that consent agenda is presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second.
Thank you. We have a motion in two seconds. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, directors. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously six to zero. Next, we have a presentation. It is titled "Section 18 Home Sales Update" from our staff, who will put this into practical terms for everyone in our community. Thank you.
Good morning, directors. For the record, my name is Molly Rogers, and I'm the Executive Director of the Housing Authority of Washington County. And today, I am thrilled to share with you some early successes we've seen in some of our first few sales of our Section 18 disposition initiative. As you may recall, we received approval by HUD back in December 2025, and we went through several months of planning and with partners and residents and as well as our board to land us on our tiered package of sales options over time, starting with our existing residents. Just as another reminder, every resident who does not end up purchasing a home will receive a tenant protection voucher so that they can find a new home of their choosing in the community or another community. And today, we are seeing the fruits of our labor and efforts and collaboration. And with that, I would like to turn it over to Assistant Director Chen and our Real Estate Division Manager Lisa Verin.
Thank you, Molly. Good morning, directors. For the record, I'm Jill Chen, Assistant Director of the Department of Housing Services. And I use she/her pronouns. As Molly mentioned, this is a quick update of our presentation about the Section 18 Dispo, which your board has approved a while ago, and from our last presentation in December of 2024. We'll give you a general update, update on relocation of our households, the sales, and some next steps. I also want to thank my colleagues, especially Melissa Daly and Matthew Follen, who has been fully on board and moving this process along with our community-based organizations and our households. Without their support and actions, we couldn't be able to present anything to you. Oops, sorry. Excuse me. In terms of quick summary on the portfolio, the Section 18 projects and in public housing are dispersed throughout the county. Of the 60 units sold, most are three bedrooms, in particular, 51 are three bedrooms, nine are four bedrooms. And we are looking at dispersing these sales in batches as they become empty. Currently, I think about 27 are in the Beaverton-Aloa area, 24 are in Hillsborough-Aloa area, six in Forest Grove, two in Tigard, and one in Cornelius.
Could I interrupt for a second?
Yeah.
This whole topic is about a portion of the Housing Authority portfolio, specifically the portion of single-family detached homes that are in our portfolio. There is a larger portfolio of public housing that the Housing Authority owns and manages. But we're here today because a certain portion of that portfolio, the 60 homes that you just spoke to locationally, are homes that, through your detailed analysis to date, we would like to dispose of or sell on the private market in order to use the proceeds to reinvest in public housing that we have determined will be better serving our community by supporting different types of housing versus these standalone, that's the word I've been searching for, single-family homes. Okay? And I think it's important for us to make sure that that message is clear, otherwise we get glossed in, what the heck is Section 19? Why does it matter? Why are we spending our time on this? Which is why I interrupted. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chair. That's really, I forgot to set the frame and explain the purpose of the sale and the purpose of redeploying the Housing Authority's assets to better serve our community. So thank you so much.
I just wanted to make sure because of the title on this chart, this isn't reflective of all the public housing that we have in Washington County.
No.
This is the single-family detached housing subset of public housing that we have. So we're all on the same page now. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chair Harrington.
Sorry, my mic wasn't on. I was just agreeing with the Chair to say that was a really good distinction because at least it was helpful for me.
Thank you so much. And as an update for our disposition of the 60 units of our public housing, and I should say, we still have about 180-plus units of public housing remaining, which we'll be bringing updates to you, the board. In terms of our status update, we have submitted our relocation plan for the existing households to Housing Urban Development and received their approval, as well as the tenant protection vouchers that Molly spoke about. We started relocation of these residents, and we have hired the consultant to help them with the relocation and move them into an appropriate community for them. We have also selected a broker to work with us on the disposition of each of those units. As you can see on their picture, those are two houses that has been sold. The bottom one was sold to the owner and resident, who's a household living in that building. So we're very pleased. That was, I believe, one of the first owner, you can call it, tenant-occupied sales. We have four Memorandums of Understanding with community-based organizations, Proud Ground, Portland Housing Center, Vienna Star, and Habitat of Tualatin. We have leased eight Section 18 homes to the sale of these community-based organizations. And as mentioned, sold one to the resident, that's the bottom one, and sold five more units in July. And I will hand it over to Lisa Verin.
I just want to pause here for a second. I think the board is really excited about how quickly you've built momentum on all of this. So it's just really exciting progress. So thank you. Go ahead.
Is that, that's a total of 14. Is that correct? That is a total of-- I'm sorry. --right now released. We are in the process of releasing some more. Okay. And the sold ones are from the-- Thank you. Great.
Again, you sold five homes in July, but you didn't say they were people who were living in them. So is, that's to, is that the report that we're going to get? Okay. Didn't mean to get hit.
Okay. Good morning, board members. Lisa Verin, real estate manager. I use she/her pronouns. This was one of the first projects I started working on when I came to the county a year ago with Melissa Daly, Matthew Follen, and Jill Chen. And in fact, this program, Plaquemines County is copying this program. So this team is really--
That's known practices.
So we have 60 units, 60 single-family units for sale, and 52 active households to relocate. Of those, we have relocated 16 households. Seven are pending moves. Three are tenant purchases. So we anticipate two more tenant purchases total. And, well, five total tenant purchases, three have been made, and two are anticipated to come to fruition in August. And 24 are in active relocation, meaning trying to figure out, you know, getting their tenant protection vouchers, identifying places to live. This is, we have a relocation consultant, DDB. They're the premier relocation consultant in the region, so they're working individually with each household to identify their needs and to help relocate them to good housing.
Can I ask you a question, Lisa?
Yes.
This made me think of, do the tenants have Section 8 voucher?
So the tenants are receiving what's called a tenant protection voucher, which is the same as a Section 8 voucher in terms of its value out in the market. And that, those vouchers were provided to the Housing Authority as a part of the Section 18 disposition approval. So we're partnering with our colleagues in the Real Estate Assistance, the Rental Assistance Division, and they are issuing the tenant protection vouchers for the residents.
I'm very glad to hear that opportunity was created for these tenants that are up for relocation, because I know sometimes there's not a lot of low-income apartments or housing that are online that people can directly move in. But when you do have Section 8 voucher, you have a bit of a different opportunity to sort of cast ad search of a new house wide and to potentially get different housing, even the ones that you lived in before. So I'm really pleased to hear that, and I appreciate you creating that opportunity. Because I know in the low-income communities, there's a big desire to have Section 8 because it creates the stability and more growth opportunity and more space, and also the opportunity to move into a different neighborhood that could potentially change the income trajectory of your family. So thank you.
I did want to just make an additional point, because that is a really important piece to this, is that people will continue to pay a percentage of their income towards rent with this move. And the key difference is, when they're in public housing, they have to be in that same unit to be able to be subsidized. This way, with the tenant protection voucher, which is akin to Section 8, they can take it and move wherever they want, and then if they want to move again, they can continue to get that subsidy because it's not time limited. So it really is a benefit to those families.
And then the part two of that question I had, I just remembered, I almost lost it, is the tenants that are up for relocation, and you have a consultant that is assisting you with that, they are actually, I think you're probably saying this without saying it, they are getting the opportunity to look into purchasing these houses as well. And perhaps there is a different life barriers out there for these tenants, which are then utilizing the opportunity to be relocated akin to the opportunity to Section 8 vouchers. Thank you.
Every household was given the opportunity to purchase the home that they live in and to connect with our partners, our community-based partners, as well as our local government partners, to identify resources for them for silent seconds and other home-buying opportunities. So I have an update. Since we actually prepared this slide, we now have seven homes that have sold for a total of $2.55 million in terms of the value of those homes. We have four upcoming closings in August for homes that will be sold, two of which will be sold to people, to residents currently living in them. And we have additionally aligned with this program, as you know, we folded in some of our specialty housing, property sales, single-family homes. So this week, we anticipate that two of the specialty housing homes will be sold as well. Three resident buyers have purchased their homes. Another two are in the hopper, so to speak. And many of the buyers are first-time home buyers. So we have, the majority of buyers are using FHA loans, which is a sure sign that they're first-time buyers. We had a vet who's actually moving from another part of the county, so that's been nice to see. And in addition, with the specialty homes, they're being purchased by families that want to have home-based childcare. So the result may actually be some more childcare for the county, which is an unexpected bonus of this work. So moving on. Yes. So our next steps are to continue to release more units for sale once vacant and to continue upgrades of vacated homes to be sale-ready. We are finding that many of these homes need repairs in order to qualify for FHA loans or other mortgages. The Housing Authority hasn't necessarily been in a position to upgrade them over the years with all the upgrades that they need. So we've been doing that work. I do want to take a minute to recognize our Housing Authority maintenance team, Nico Bautista, Luis Cordova, and Trino Castaneda. This work, really, they've been at the core, working under Matthew Follen's direction to turn over these homes and to get the contractors in to do the work themselves and to really make these homes great for their next people who are going to be living in them. And I just, this represents additional work on top of their normal day-to-day work maintaining the public housing portfolio. So I did want to take a minute to recognize them. We're looking to complete our relocation of residents by the end of 2025 and to complete all home sales by the end of 2026. As you know, the first project that's going to be benefiting from the revenues on these is the WoodSpring Apartments, which is a preservation project of 172 units in Tiger. So that will be the first recipient of the funds that we raise through these sales. And if you have any questions or comments, please let me know.
Well, you've been very patient with us as we've been asking questions during the course of the presentation, so thank you. I'll just kick off the comments here and say that this is really exciting progress. There's a lot of detail work that has gone into setting up this project and getting the permission through the Federal Housing and Urban Development Agency, HUD. And this board's been through all that with you and approving all of that, including all the logistics with regard to the tenant notification, the tenant relocation and whatnot, to the background that Commissioner Phi was mentioning. We, as the board, are very familiar with that, but it's very helpful to hear that you've completed that phase of work. You're now in the, let's get these homes onto the market and provide homeownership opportunities for as many of those residents who are interested and to then go from there. So keep up the great work. There's an opportunity for us as a board, if you'd like, to share our thank-yous, not just verbally here, but through thank-you cards or whatever. That's always available to you, so just let us know. And at this juncture, I'd like to open up the floor. I was just intending to kick off comments versus go last. So go ahead, Commissioner Snyder, Director Snyder.
Thank you, Chair. I am so happy, and I know it was stated, but I'm going to just acknowledge it, so happy that any of these homes are able to be purchased by people that have been living in them. To me, that is an indicator of success in a variety of different ways, not just in this transaction, but also that that household is in a place to be able to do that, likely because of the support they've received in the past and that, you know, in the future that means that they won't. And that's also success. So I'm just very excited about that particular component of this, and I hope we continue to work on making as many of those happen as possible.
Vice Chair Treese?
Excuse me. Go ahead, Vice Chair Treese.
Thank you, Chair. I second everything that's been said here. There's no question about that. But what really made me smile is with all this progress and the positive work, the fact that we are reinvesting now in WoodSpring and the fact that we have been a part of the process of WoodSpring, it just ties everything together in such a wonderful way that, you know, I'm just getting goosebumps about the fact that, because I reflect back on meetings in this room with really upset people, and it was our team that found answers. And I appreciate that. Not only did you find answers in the beginning for WoodSpring, but we're continuing with the renovations. So thank you for your work.
Anyone else?
I'll jump in. Commissioner Willie?
Who are you?
Okay.
Thank you for the great work you're doing. I really appreciate the housing. I think we say this about all the Washington County, but the housing team, you all are doing a remarkable job out there, really creating space for people who really need these houses and ensuring to keep them in there. You know, as a member of an elected official who's serving while having small children, I really appreciate and want to celebrate the twofer that you mentioned with childcare opportunity. The more childcare opportunities that come online for the residents of Washington County, the better for our residents for Washington County. So this is a greater good for the entire Washington County. So I really appreciate you mentioning childcare, especially when we have childcare deserts throughout Oregon. So I commend you that and good work on that. This is just for my own edification, but I'm sure there's somebody out there and others in the community that share this curiosity question. I'm wondering if you could speak to the four community-based organizations that you have memorandum of understanding with. What is the process? How do you divide and sort of distribute fairly of these dispositions?
So I'm going to start, but Jill, you can jump in if you want to add. So these four organizations, they receive, we release the units in batches. And those batches are about eight to 10 single-family homes. That's about the number that we can manage getting sales ready and putting out on the market, although we're realizing that two may even be ambitious, so we may need to dial that back just a tad. And so we give them a, they already have a complete list of all 60 properties, although we've asked them not to go to the properties because people are still living there. Then we release them in batches of eight to 10 as we're working on them and know that they're ready. So, and that's called Tier Two. So we have released the first batch, and as you can see, sales have occurred on that. We're releasing the second batch. We've given sort of a pre-release, and they're aware of what those units are. And then it really has to do with whether or not they have a client available to purchase the unit who also has down payment assistance and can also purchase the unit with the down payment assistance. We haven't had any conflicts yet. I think the down payment assistance is our biggest challenge at the moment in terms of trying to find resources, given kind of what's been happening at the state level.
Director Phi, I just wanted to mention, of the four community-based organizations, we actually have reached out to all of the community-based organizations in the county that are involved in-- Okay, sorry. Is this better? Okay. We had reached out to all the community-based organizations in the county that worked with low-income residents who are seeking to become homeowners. The four had applied. There was a couple, three, four more who were interested, and some of them did not withdrew. And those were, I think, Hacienda, the African Alliance, and NEA. So there was a number of others, but they had not decided to move forward. These community-based organizations are also working with our local jurisdictions to see about getting down payment assistance, as Lisa mentioned.
Yeah, I'm just going to add, so the biggest challenges right now with the CBOs are interest rates, ability to get down payment assistance, and family readiness, household readiness. So we've actually, after this first batch, we kind of want to know what's going on and what's working and not working. So our team has reached out and is interviewing each of our community-based partners, as well as each of our local government partners, to find out what could work better. I want us to be able to pivot each as we proceed in this project and try to get as many households into these homes who are low to moderate income as possible.
Thank you for the thoughtful answer you provided. And I want to put a manifest to the universe. If you figure out a creative way of creating a robust homeownership assistance down payment opportunities in Washington County, please bring it forward to the leadership and to the board so that we can really invest in that. I'm sure you're close to this problem, so you're the closest to the solution as well. So please, just manifesting out there that we really need to, the homeownership assistance program is so helpful and could create robust homeowners out there. But that is a really a big barrier that I know that exists for so many people. But I know it's all hands on deck, and I know there is many entities and many leaders that are creating, how do we increase the investment in homeownership? So I want to appreciate the work that you're doing out there, and thank you for that thoughtful answer, and thank you for the work you're doing. You have an ally in me when it comes to housing and affordable housing.
And I think that statement applies to all seven members of the Housing Authority Board of Directors. Director Roper.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah.
No, no apologies needed.
I wanted to ask some general questions in regards to the sales and stuff. This project started a long time ago with Comey guys, and it's grown so much. Back then, the market was a different place. Interest rate was lower, the houses, fair market value was lower. Now, during these times with everything that's happened the last four years or so, does the market rate, it's gone up too then for, since that's just what inflation does, does that have a huge difference to any of the tenants who may have wanted to purchase or finding difficulties getting deposit? Trying to find the right words to frame this question, right? But that's like one of my concerns is like, has the value of the house gone up so much because of everything in this area in Washington County? Does, I know that's beneficial to WoodSprings, but for the tenants, the low-income tenants who are trying to make their first purchase, how's that weighing out?
So we found that the prices are about what we estimated they would be initially, and we did an assessment, you know, around $400,000, $420,000, $430,000 per household. And then we've been, you know, as we've gotten to know the houses better, if we find that the house has deficits, then we work with the realtor to adjust or to make those repairs to the home so that that household can move into the home and be able to manage it. But between the price, the down payment assistance, the gap, there is, we are seeing a gap due to the, due to the interest rates, but we're hoping that our local government partners will be, and our nonprofit partners will be able to help us identify more down payment assistance. There is a 10% discount off of the market rate of the home that the Housing Authority provides automatically. And as I mentioned, if there's reasons for that to be discounted further, then we take that into consideration.
Great, thank you. Yeah, because I remember back in August, the fall, when we first started reaching out and doing the RAB, the market value was about 325,000 to 400,000. So I was wondering how much of a difference it is since the approvals and we moved on to the next tiers and so forth. And Director Phi asked the question, and just like the previous directors, I commend you guys for all your hard work. Thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you for being here and participating, Director Roper. You always add value. Please know that. Thank you very much for today's presentation. Keep up the great work and galek on releasing the next batch and finishing up with this batch and all the assessment of learnings as you go forward. So, thank you. Next, we'll move on to our second public comment period for today's Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting. Clerk Moss.
Did not see anyone sign up in advance in the room. Would anyone in the auditorium wish to provide public comment for up to five minutes on how, any housing-related topic? Not seen one coming forth, raise their hand. Would any member via Zoom wish to provide public comment to the Housing Authority for up to five minutes? Give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seen any hands, Director Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Now to Board of Directors announcements. Director Roper, I think I'll start by seeing if you have any announcements or items you'd like to contribute today.
Nope, except for, I did see Director Phi during the parade at the end, waved at her, but she was marching along over there off of Grant Cornell. It was really nice to see her up there.
Thank you. Any other board members?
Yes, Chair Harrington, thank you. I'm sorry I didn't see you. I would have waved back, but it was, I'm sure it was great to see you as well. I don't have any announcements, but I did want to recognize, I do see a constituent that's wearing a shirt that says, "Make Washington County Great Again," and I think it's only fair to ask another member bringing another shirt that says, "Make Washington County Gay Again." So, bring it out there to the universe.
Seeing no other Board of Director announcements, do we have a motion to adjourn today's Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting? There's a motion from Director Roper. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously six to zero. So in a few minutes, we've adjourned the Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting, and in a few minutes, we'll switch over to the regular business meeting. Thank you, Clerk Moss. Welcome, everyone, to the month of August, but here specifically Tuesday, August 5th, 2025, our regular business meeting. Clerk Moss, could you do us the honors, please?
Certainly, Chair Harrington. The Washington County Board of Commissioners also meeting as the Board of Directors, or Clean Water Services, and all other county service districts, meeting this regular session August 5th, 2025. Commissioner Phi?
Present.
Commissioner Willie?
Here.
Commissioner Snyder?
Here.
Vice Chair Treese?
Here.
Chair Harrington.
Here. So we have a full complement, all five members of the Commission and the CWS Board of Directors. The next item, ah, would everyone please stand to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Next on our agenda is our first public comment period. This is an opportunity for members of our community to provide comment for up to two minutes an individual, 10 minutes total, on any topic that you wish. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to do so?
We do, Madam Chair. We have Sandra Nelson and Jill Latre.
Go ahead, Ms. Nelson.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. My name's Sandra Nelson. I'm a resident of Washington County. As I'm sure we can all agree, fear is a very real and powerful emotion. After the meeting two weeks ago, when many people spoke passionately about their position regarding DEI, I talked with one of these women who told me, "I'm terrified of Trump's executive order." "Why?" I asked her. I'm going to paraphrase her very angry, fearful response. "Because that man will destroy everything we've worked for. He wants to control everything we do." I replied, "You can still love one another. No one can stop you from doing that." A friend from a Middle Eastern country told me what had happened to him when his small group of Christian brothers was infiltrated by a non-believer. Suddenly one night militants broke into their little meeting and demanded that they all renounce their belief in Jesus and simply declare that Allah was the one true God. My friend said, "I was terrified. I knew that if I did not comply with their demand, I would be imprisoned and tortured." At this point in his story, he lowered his head and covered his face with both hands and said, "Fear makes us not think right." I hope to tell the rest of this story next time. Father in heaven, it's true. Fear makes us not think right, and we have all faced fear. But your word tells us over and over again not to be afraid, but rather to trust you and do what is right, no matter the cost. Please help each one of us, and especially our elected officials, to discern what is right and trust you. Where there is conflict in man-made laws, please give our leaders wisdom and courage to comply with those laws that reflect your principles of what is right. In Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Ms. Latre, go ahead.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. My name is Jill Latre, and I've been a resident of Washington County for over 30 years. Today I will read excerpts from the Executive Order 14248, preserving and protecting the integrity of American elections, signed March 25th, 2025. The full language is included in your handout. Section 8, preventing foreign interference and unlawful use of federal funds. The Attorney General, in consultation with the Secretary of Treasury, shall prioritize enforcement of 52 U.S. Code 30121 and other appropriate laws to prevent foreign nationals from contributing or donating to U.S. elections. The Attorney General shall likewise prioritize enforcement of 31 U.S. Code 1352, which prohibits lobbying by organizations or entities that have received any federal funds. Section 9, the heads of all agencies and the Election Assistance Commission shall cease all agency actions implementing Executive Order 14019 of March 7th, 2021, promoting access to voting, which was revoked by Executive Order 14148. And within 90 days of the date of this order, submit to the President a report describing the compliance with this order. Section 10, if any provision of this order or the application of any provision to any agency, person, or circumstance is held to be invalid, the remainder of this order shall not be affected thereby. Section 11, nothing in this order shall be construed or impair or otherwise affect the authority granted by law to an executive department or agency or head thereof, or the functions of the Director of the Office of Management and the budget relating to budgetary, administrative, or legislative proposals. This order shall be implemented consistent with applicable law and subject to the availability of all appropriations. Thank you.
And we have the last item, item C, as well in the handout. Thank you very much for sticking to time. Appreciate it. Clerk Moss, is there anyone else?
I do not see anyone else sign up in the auditorium. Would any other member in the auditorium wish to provide comment for up to two minutes? Not seen any raised hands or anyone coming forward. Would any member via Zoom wish to provide public comment for two minutes? Give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seen any hands, Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Next, we'll move on to today's consent agenda, which consists of 10 items. Two sets of minutes from the Board of County Commissioners, two items from Clean Water Services, one item from Finance, one item from Facilities, Fleet, and Parks, one item from Human Resources, and three items from Land Use and Transportation. What are the wishes of the Commission?
Love to approve.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion to approve today's consent agenda, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye.
Chair Harrington, point of clarification, could you call for a discussion?
So, following our rules of procedure, what you do is you make, you request that an item be moved off the consent agenda for discussion, and that was not done. Instead, we had a motion to act on all 10. So if you would like to rescind the motion that you made, that's fine. That would be following the rules of procedure.
Okay, I won't rescind my motion to approve the consent agenda item, items, but I do have comments and questions that I submitted for consent agenda item six, which is to award additional contract funding for the Washington County Law Enforcement Courtroom Project. I understand that that request is additional $50,000 for expenditure needs of scope changes. And the question I submitted to our leadership team and to our county administrators, the anticipation, if we are anticipating more scope creep, since this was identified as expansion of the scope of the project. And then the other question I had for Tanya was if you could give us an update on the timeline of the project to sort of understand completion and how that's going. And then the other comments or questions that I have for the consent agenda item that I also submitted was consent agenda item number seven, the approval resolution in order to amend FY 2526 pay plan and position and salary report. I just want to say to the team and to Washington County that I'm really glad that we caught these discrepancies and we're making adjustments, especially to the positions that were significantly below the median market rate. I think one of them was about 7%, and then the other one was about 17% under the median market. It's important that we are aligning composition appropriately. That said, I did have questions around, in light of the recent article in the Oregonian suggesting that Washington County might be out of compliance when it comes to pay equity. I won't go into some of the questions that I submitted, but I do want to ask Tanya if you can come back and give the board an update on development of job descriptions, class, and comp study, and the application of Oregon pay equity in terms of that particular or the same agenda, consent agenda item. The other questions that I was wondering that I, I think I have my answer, is the question around the Sheriff's Office request to add two new classification jail services, technician, supervisor, and a manager. And the question I posed was if these positions were, positions that were eliminated during the budget process are now being added back in. So those are the comments I had, which is really just questions to our leadership team, not necessarily needing to pull those agenda items, but I think it's important to have those answers back, and it could be delivered in an update. But, so, now you can call the vote, and I will vote in support.
Chair, if I may respond to those for members of the public. So really exciting, our newest courtroom in the Law Enforcement Center actually opened yesterday. So this, what this change order, it is 50,000. So in the scope of, I would say, construction, this is small. So this puts us still under what we originally had projected for that courthouse build-out. The original project estimate was $3 million. This puts us under the $2 million, I'm not doing math in my head immediately, but under $2 million. So just huge kudos to our facilities team to always looking at cost effectiveness and efficiency. This is just customary as part of a contracting. There is unexpected elements that come up with contracting, and per our procurement rules, these come back to the board for your consideration. I would say these are scope changes additions that we find within construction that, to me, is different than scope creep or expanding the scope of a project. I will note, just why are we constructing a new courtroom? The state provides staffing for the courts, and counties are responsible for facilities. The state has been exploring ways to add additional judges, and our courthouse is bursting at the seams. And so really glad that we receive the cost share in the courthouse planning dollars so we can look at a longer-term investment in the courthouse. But once again, this newest courtroom opened yesterday, and we're just completing the remaining project. Relative to our HR transformation, as your board is aware, we have been, you've had several board presentations, both through work sessions, round tables, also in budget documents, messages. We are, we have been undergoing creation of the county's very first job descriptions. We had job classifications, but not job descriptions. And I won't spend time in why this is important, but it's a very fundamental practice of HR. We are nearing the completion of that process. We're also undergoing a class and compensation study, which looks at all the classifications across the county, takes into account the job descriptions, and then also compensation structure. This is the first time the county has gone through this extensive work in over 20 years. Well, Commissioner Phi, to your point, our target is to stay at market for positions, but this is comprehensively looking at our structure. So more to come, and we can get a work session scheduled in the near future this fall. in the near future, this fall, sometime for an update for your Board. After Oregon passed Oregon Pay Equity, I believe it was twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, the county quickly went to work on the implementation of that state law. We contracted with an employment law attorney who helped us layer on to our classification system, Oregon Pay Equity. And we've continued to be in that implementation mode since and have been in alignment with state law and the procedures of pay equity. So, this is all part of our H R transformation journey and so we will get that scheduled for a more thorough update.
Thank you, Ms. Angie. And for the record, Commissioner Phi was late to our work session and missed the check-in time with regard to today's formal agenda, hence this extraordinary discussion. We have a motion and a second to approve today's consent agenda with these ten items. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Board members. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next on our agenda is the announcement of vacancies and the need to authorize the recruitment of applicants for various county boards and commissions through early September or until all vacancies are filled. Due to current and upcoming vacancies, we're requesting authorization to recruit for the following board-appointed advisory commissions. For Aging and Veteran Services Advisory Council, ten positions, Civil Service Commission, one. The Columbia Pacific Economic Development District, also known as COLPAC, one position. Developmental Disabilities Council, two. Enhanced Sheriff Patrol District and Combined Urban Road Maintenance District Budget Committee, that's known as the E S P D slash U R M D Budget Committee, two positions available. Enhanced Sheriff Patrol District Advisory Committee, once again, E S P D Advisory Committee, that's two position. A Garbage and Recycling Advisory Committee, one. Housing Advisory Committee, also known as H A C, one position. The Metzger Park Local Improvement District Advisory Board, four positions. The North Bethany County Service District for Roads Budget Committee, three positions. The Public Safety Coordinating Council, P S C C. There is one community member position available. Rural Roads Operation and Maintenance Advisory Committee, also known as ROMAC, one position available now and three positions that'll become available starting September thirtieth of this year. Our Transit Committee, seven positions available now. The Urban Road Maintenance District Advisory Committee, also known as U R M D, one position after September thirtieth of twenty twenty five. And lastly, the Washington County and Service District for Lighting Number One Combined Budget Committee, two positions available. There is further information available in today's packet as well as the Washington County Board of, the Washington County website, washingtoncountyor.gov. Some of these positions are looking for specific knowledge or you need to live in a particular geographic area. So, these are volunteer positions that we greatly appreciate advising our staff and in some cases advising the work of the Board. What are the wishes of the Commission with regard to authorizing the recruitment of the applicants?
Love to approve.
Second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we have our second public comment period for today's meeting. This is an opportunity for members of our community to come and address the Board for up to five minutes and individual, no more than thirty minutes maximum. Clerk Moss, who do we have who wishes to do so?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. We have Bob Terry and Dale Feek.
Welcome, Mr. Terry.
Good morning, Chair and all Commissioners. Good to see you. We have a very busy, busy Board. A lot going on, right?
No, she called you first.
Commissioners, good morning to you and appreciate being here with you this morning. I'm not seeing very good this morning and I stayed up to about two o'clock in the morning putting this together rather quickly, but we'll try it anyway. Chair Harrington, I want to tell you that I appreciate what you and your Board do. You've had a busy year, a busy term. A lot of things going on and a lot of things coming to you and more to happen. For the last nine months or so, we've been meeting with you every morning, almost every week. We hope you've taken good notes and kept up it. We have not seen a whole lot of results coming the other way out to the public. So, this morning, I'm going to give you somewhat of a recap of not what we've presented to you, what we've done, but asking you to carry forward. I appreciate what you're doing and I want you to know I respect your positions. It's difficult. It's not an easy job. I certainly know that. Chair Harrington mentioned that our county, as an election clerk, this is at a previous meeting, as required by the state, this is on correct, this needs to be corrected as far as the official recording clerk is considered. Who here in this county is who handles the registration of marriages, births, deaths, certificates, deeds, and trusts and things like that? Plus, the hundreds of others of clerks that work throughout our county are clerks, such as Mr. Moss. The larger package you received from Clerk Moss will show that such a misstatement by our Chair is very misleading and out of context as what intended by the election integrity presenters. To this Board and to, in the larger packet, our pages eleven, twelve, thirteen is a blank. You will see that the Secretary of State for the State of Oregon lists Joe Nelson, our County Director of Assessment and Taxation, along with Dan Forster as the Elections Manager. We do not have a county clerk as referred to by our County Chair. Why is this? Pretty simple. We and the other eight remaining home rule counties do not have an elected county clerk because all other county clerks answer to the Secretary of the State. In our county, the Elections Officer answers to our County Administrator, in turn, our Policy Board of Commissioners. The Constitution with our county charter is very clear of our county obligation of having the capability of maintaining our clean rules, election rules, and our voter procedures, voting procedures. Our understanding, and we have fairly good assumption, the number of your total estimate cost of voting is only assumptive because we have not even been, we have not asked, we have asked and we have not even been given any answers to our questions. No records and the cost of your voting has been turned over to us as we have asked. We have also done, got some numbers from the state and we have received some numbers through you, through our own efforts. We know that it can be done less expensive and is being done in other places in this state and in counties and other states. Free world countries such as Canada, we have done it here in this county in less time and one hundred percent accounted for. We have done this in conjunction with your Elections Office. It's not funny, it's serious. Time and one hundred percent accounting with our system. In the Elections time, no fault of theirs, your Elections Office does a good job. They must work with what they are given to work with. We have shown you list after list of defalcations in our voting system and to have lists of obvious fraud and votes that should not have been made or counted, including times when there were certifications and we gave you and your Elections Office good cause to not certify our elections and you did it anyway. On other matters, not related to our same legal issues.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. If you could finish up, please. Your five minutes are up.
Yes, unfortunately, I will go very quickly here and finish for you. The state maybe has been written in direct conflict with our federal constitution laws and accounts charter. That allows you to be.
Thank you very much, Mr. Terry. We need to move on, adhering to our rules of procedure.
Thank you for your rudeness.
Mr. Feek.
Thank you for your rudeness.
Go ahead, Mr. Feek.
Chair Harrington and Commissioners, I'm Dale Feek. I attended the work session to, I attended the work session today and I'm going to talk about that. Before I do, though, I want to let you know, if you don't know, the Local Emergency Planning Committee is having a table topic exercise on August the fourteenth from eight thirty to twelve at the Hillsborough Fire Station. Before the County Commissioners, none of you are there. In two thousand and fifteen, I proposed that the county establish a local emergency planning committee and Scott Porter took that under his arm and he got it done. And John Wheeler now is the, in charge of that. So, anyway, that's just for your information. At the work session today, access and opportunity, and that's not a public meeting, though. If you haven't been involved, you can't go to that meeting. I'm just making you aware that they're doing a table topic exercise. Access and opportunity, Alex Barnett spoke about that. I appreciate the information he gave on C B Os, the new contracts and many of those. That's very important information for the public to know about. Tanya Angie, County Administrator, let everybody know that there's a five-part video related to the new access and opportunity and people need to be able to watch that and learn what the county is doing. That'll be on the webpage. Acre Monday meeting, I, and Commissioner Trish, you talked about that. I don't know if Commissioner Snyder, you went to that meeting since you're both part of that. Chair Harrington, you, at that meeting, went half the time. There were some problems with the audio. Understand that, but the previous meeting, I came here and the doors were locked and there wasn't even anybody in. Somebody was here, they let us in, but the meeting wasn't even here. So, there's, there are procedural problems with the acre meetings and just reinforcing Chair Harrington what you said. Stimson Lumber Company and Commissioner Willie, you said you took a tour of that. I'm really pleased with the Department of Environmental Equality. As you know, I make public comment to the Environmental Equality Commission and I'm in contact with the people that do permitting at those Title V, Title V operations. And Stimson Lumber Company had many violations. And through D E Q and putting the pressure on through going to have them be violated or change the procedures, Stimson Lumber Company decided to spend the money and improve their techniques and to protect air, water, and land. So, I'm glad that you took a tour and I'm glad Stimson Lumber Company is following through with the requirements of D E Q to meet standards. So, I appreciate you expressing that as something that you went to and did a tour of that. I want to talk about Commissioner Phi, Nafeesah Phi. The reason I'm going to say this is because I've attended the work sessions for many times. I respect you, Commissioner Phi, but I see some problems, okay? And the problems, one of the problems I've seen is that you in a work session decided the order in which you're going to do, talk about, five Commissioners go in the order in which you're going to talk. That was a decision made in the work session. Then on the dais, you changed that and decided not to do that and you requested that you change the order. I thought that was out of order for you to do that. I'm just saying that openly. And I respect you and I've given you feedback different ways personally, but I thought that was totally out of order for you to do that. And again, an out of order, I thought, was the amendment that was, that was proposed by you when the access and opportunity resolution came before as a Board. And so, that, to me, you should have brought up that and done it appropriately through parliamentary procedure, but you didn't do that and you ended up bringing it before the Board. And I thought that was inappropriate. So, and then the last thing, home rule, and I think Alex Barnett finally said at the point when you were talking, we need to do an executive session to understand what's going on. And I don't know what that executive session occurred, if you talked with him personally, but I think you need to be informed of the details necessary in the passing of that access, access and opportunity. Now, I say this because I know that you're running for County Commission Chair and I know Pam Trish, you are too, and others. And I think we need to make sure that we know people have the skill set to run meetings according to parliamentary procedure in work sessions and in this meeting as a business meeting. And I had two more things to say, but my time is up. Catherine Harrington, Chair.
Clerk Moss, is there anyone else for today?
Anyone else in the auditorium wish you to provide comment? Raise hands.
Thank you, Commissioner Phi.
No one has come forward. We do have one online, Ms. Charlie Henderson. Mr. Henderson, can you hear us?
I can, Clerk Moss. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
And go ahead.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much. So, good morning, Chair Harrington. Commissioners, for the record, my name is Charlie Henderson. I'm a Washington County resident. I'm here this morning to call upon this Board to adopt a draft resolution, publicly calling for an end to the ongoing genocide of our Palestinian brothers and sisters. Such a resolution should call on support for not only an immediate and permanent ceasefire, but the release of all remaining hostages on both sides and most urgently, support for a complete arms embargo against Israel. For nearly twenty-three months, Israel, with the backing of the United States and many of our Western allies, has waged a complete war against the Palestinian population. Nearly every day, we have seen a nonstop barrage of the most horrific stories, videos, images, and testimonies in modern history. We've seen every hospital and university bomb, residential buildings brought down, churches and mosques blown up, refugee camps bombed and set ablaze, a record number of journalists and aid workers killed, the forced starvation of an entire people and subsequently, the gunning down of those seeking any bit of food for them and their families. Though the total figures are impossible to tell at this point, totals right now range anywhere from one hundred and thirty thousand to four hundred and thirty thousand people killed, tens of thousands of which are children. This past month has been especially damning as images of emaciated babies and children have been shared all across various platforms. Meanwhile, we have been aggressively gaslit by not only Israel, but more importantly, our own government and mainstream outlets. Under both Biden and now Trump, our government has worked tirelessly with anyone willing to, excuse me, with anyone willing to parrot their lies to convince you, me, and everyone else in the county or country that the starving children with limbs blown off are our enemies and that the people committing the genocide have a right to defend themselves against said starving amputee children. There isn't enough time to go over all the war crimes that have been and continue to be committed, but I encourage this Board to check out reporting from outlets like Zetao, Democracy Now!, Dropsite News, groups like Jewish Voice for Peace and Not in Our Name and even Israeli genocide and Holocaust scholars that have all called this what it is. Today, however, I am here because of a one-two punch of news that came out this past week. First, that Israel has stated publicly that it will in fact be occupying the Gaza Strip. We will see the same terrorist tactics used by illegal settlers in the West Bank, but on steroids. The plan is and has always been to completely cleanse Gaza and the West Bank of all Palestinians. Second, that our thin skin clearly compensating for something wannabe King Trump has stated that any state that speaks out against Israel's actions through boycotts will no longer be eligible for federal funding in the event of disasters. Like most of what this guy does, this too is illegal and yet, as all of you have realized, that doesn't matter in twenty twenty five. To be clear, then, if you stand against genocide, ethnic cleansing, the aforementioned war crimes and the many more not mentioned or the numerous illegal bombings and terrorist attacks by Israel and the U.S. on surrounding nations like Iran, Lebanon, Syria, Yemen, and of course, the occupied Palestinian territories, the Trump regime seeks to punish you by letting your communities and residents be wiped out through wildfires, floods, earthquakes, tornadoes, hurricanes, or whatever natural or unnatural disasters that may occur. Now, this Board's credibility on speaking up for marginalized voices in our community has definitely taken a hit, even though I genuinely understand the impossible position that you were put in with one hundred and thirty-five million of funding being kept from your constituents. And to be clear, adopting a public resolution isn't going to end the man-made famine or stop the slaughter of kids. But what it will do is send the message that Washington County, the most diverse county in Oregon, stands with Senator Merkley in calling for an arms embargo. embargo. This will put much needed pressure on this county's congressional delegates, Congresswoman Bonametian Salinas, to stop sitting on the fence with her votes and to stand with their few peers that are saying enough is enough. Failing to do so sends this message, that Washington County is happy to pat itself on the back when it comes to feel-good proclamations, but if speaking out against innocent men, women, children, babies being starved to death and gunned down as they seek aid might hurt our budget, will bend the knee in a heartbeat. So I'll conclude with this, if you fancy yourself someone that supports domestic or international law, you must speak out against this. If you consider yourself an ally to marginalized people around the world, you must speak out. If you consider yourself to be pro-life, you must speak out. And even if you are just a genuine psychopath that doesn't care about what's happening, but just doesn't want your taxes raised, you must speak out. At a time when we are being asked to do more with less, both as government and as citizens, how do we have any money to kill kids abroad when we have so many issues here at home? Please do the right thing, show leadership in this moment, support a resolution and push our congressional representatives to actually represent us. Thank you all so much for your time on this. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone else today?
Is there anyone else via Zoom that wish to provide comment for up to five minutes? Give you a last chance to utilize the raise hand function. Not seeing any additional hands, Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Next, we'll move on to board announcements. I'll start with our meeting announcements. You can find all of our meeting packets on our Washington County website, washingtoncountyor.gov and our meeting portal. Next Tuesday, August 12th, we'll be having work sessions starting at 9:00. On Thursday, August 14th, we'll have our roundtable starting at 9:00. On Tuesday, August 19th, that too, will be a work session day starting at 9:00. And on Tuesday, August 26th, we'll have our work session starting at 2:00 with a board meeting in the evening that day at 6:30 PM. I would also like as part of board announcements to share that the Washington County Board of Commissioners does not have any work related to foreign policy in its portfolio and as such, we have chosen to not move forward with any legislation related to foreign affairs. We pretty maxed out just attending to the matters for the county portfolio. Additionally, I want to ensure that our community members have the benefit of facts. We have a county clerk. Our current county clerk is Mr. Joe Nelson. He is in that position following all of the state laws and requirements and does an excellent job. The county clerk is not to be confused with our board clerk, as mentioned here. Kevin Moss is our board clerk who does a stellar job of ensuring that we have all of our meeting needs, agenda setting packets, not only for our Board of Commissioners and Clean Water Services Board of Directors, but for a whole variety of county advisory committees. So thank you, Clerk Moss. If you're seeking additional information, you can find it on our county website. Commissioners, do you have any other board announcements for today? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion to adjourn today's Board of County Commissioners, Clean Water Services Board of Directors, regular business meeting of Tuesday, August 5th, 2025.
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. In 10 minutes, at 11:25, we will reconvene in our work session. Thank you. We're hereby adjourned.